Before we rise for the pledge of allegiance and no desire to interfere on this onset.
The Boyertown Community has lost yet another great man, Dr. Jim Trivitt. Dr. Trivitt was a eye doctor from the Boys in the Boyertown Community. He was also a longtime member of the Boyertown Lions Club, where he served as president for four different terms. He was a community volunteer in different areas in the year of Boyertown area. In addition to his extensive volunteer contributions, he was incredibly proud of the work he did with vision care throughout the country on his four trips to Haiti, three trips to Ukraine, Costa Rica, Guatemala. Dr. Trivitt loved listening to bluegrass music and played banjo as well. My sincere condolences go out to his wife Kitty and his daughters during their time. May you all remember him and his family at this time. Thank you.
The Board of School Directors had an executive session prior to the April 9th, 2024 meeting. The topic was legal. The session lasted approximately 40 minutes.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Dorenzo, Principal of Washington Elementary School, for a brief welcome.
Good evening, as I woke up with grace and almost fall. All good, so Lisa Dorenzo. For those of you that are new faces to the board, welcome to Washington. I'm Lisa Dorenzo. I'm the principal here, and I am really excited this evening to introduce three incredible women to you who are part of our pre-K program that runs here at Washington and also at Pottstown, or Pottstown, at Boyertown area, Boyertown Senior High School. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you Mrs. Stephanie DeLong, Mrs. Marissa Rampart, and Mrs. Denise Detweiler. Denise is also the coordinator of our pre-K program. Ladies, would you like to come up?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to highlight our Pre-K Counts program here at Boyertown Area School District. I'm Denise Detweiler, as Mrs. Dorenzo just said. I'm our pre-K coordinator for the district and one of the teachers here at Washington. With me tonight are Marissa Rampart, who teaches here at Washington with me, and then Mrs. DeLong, who teaches in our pre-K classroom at BASH. For those of you who may not know, Pre-K Counts is a state-funded, high-quality pre-K program that services children ages three to five across the state of Pennsylvania. The program is free to all families who qualify. Pre-K Counts was established in 2007 and has continued to grow steadily since then. A little history of our pre-K program here at Boyertown. We started off in 2018 with three half-day classrooms. COVID came along at the end of year two and changed our path. In the fall of 2020, we transitioned to two full-day classrooms serving 30 children. We were then offered the opportunity to open a third classroom in February of 2021, servicing an additional 19 children. We then gained an additional five slots in December of 2022, which put us at our current enrollment of 54 children serviced within our school district. The program has allowed us to provide hands-on learning environments utilizing a curriculum built around the Pennsylvania learning standards for early childhood. The standards that we cover include approaches to learning through play, language and literacy development, mathematical thinking and expression, scientific thinking and technology, social studies thinking, creative thinking and expression, health, wellness, and physical development, social and emotional development, and partnerships for learning. We're very busy in pre-K. In addition to our indoor learning environments, we have been able to expand our outdoor play areas by purchasing new playground equipment and having fencing installed. Most recently, with the help of Kathy and the custodial crew here at Washington, we have installed a new sensory path for the students to enjoy. You will see that path in our slideshow. As you're viewing some pictures from our program throughout the year, Mrs. DeLong is going to share a little bit about the collaboration with the high school students at BASH. And then Mrs. Rampart and I are going to share some feedback we received from families about what this program has meant to them and how it has impacted their lives. We felt the best way to show the importance and success of the program was to share firsthand experiences from the families who have gone through it. Mrs. DeLong?
One of the benefits of being in the high school is the opportunity to collaborate with the Family Consumer Science Program. Through this collaboration, we work with Mrs. Strick and the preschool one, two, and three classes. For these classes, the preschool students are paired with a high school student for the first half of the year and a different high school student for the second half of the year. Two to three days a week, each class, period, different high school students come in and help their preschool buddies. This gives the preschoolers more one-on-one support with activities they do throughout the day and someone to play with them in the intra-centers. The high schoolers take turns teaching lessons where they have a small group of preschoolers and do activities based on our themes and studies for that week. This also gives the high schoolers leadership skills that they may need in their futures. With the collaboration through the preschool class, we do a gift exchange during the holidays and a carnival at the end of the school year. In addition to our buddy program, we also have a high school volunteer, we have high school volunteers that come into the classroom at various times of the day depending on their schedules and their grades. They help with things like setting up lunch, cleaning up after snack, and interacting with preschoolers. High schoolers have also come to me asking if they could observe the preschool classroom for clinical hours needed for some of their classes. This year, we have taken that collaboration in a new direction. The high school now offers a textile construction class, which is new. This school received a grant that allowed them to buy supplies for the class, such as sewing machines. Through this class, we once again collaborated with the high school's classes. We buddied the preschool kids with high school students. After reading a story about a silly monster, the preschoolers were able to pick a monster template to design. They talked with their high school buddy and came up with a design and colored the monster template. The high school students then took the templates and made the silly monsters come to life for the preschoolers. They sewed the monsters to look exactly, or as close as they could, to the template the preschoolers designed. It is really nice to see everyone work so well together and have such a wonderful time.
We would love to speak with you about the wonderful things our program provides to the community, but we feel it would be best to hear from our former parents. Here are some things former Pre-K Counts families have said about our program. We have had quite a bit of feedback and wanted to share from everyone who responded to us, so hang in there with us. Pre-K Counts was such a blessing for our family. Both my children attended and loved every second of being there. They learned so much more than just academics, such as how to behave in a school setting and how to make friends. We were so fortunate to have our children attend and have such great staff that loved all the kids like their own. This program helped my children learn to love school at an early age.
Two of my children went through the Pre-K Counts program. I truly believe it taught them how to go to school and have fun with learning. Some of their favorite memories are calendars, centers, and their teachers. Thank you for always going above and beyond. We were extremely lucky to have the Pre-K program be a part of our lives.
This program, this program was a gift for my family. Without it, I don't believe my children would have gotten the education they needed to thrive in school. It gave the needed social and academic skills they had been missing. As a parent, you want the best for your children, and this program gave me the ability to provide that to them. Thank you.
The program is amazing. It prepared my twins for kindergarten, and I could never have afforded to put them in such a true-to-school-life program. My older son had gone to a daycare pre-K program, and he struggled academically when it came time for kindergarten. I feel very blessed my children had this opportunity.
The pre-K program was amazing for our family and exceeded every expectation. It fully prepared our daughter both academically and socially and gave her the stepping stone to success with the growing demands of kindergarten and public education.
The Pre-K Counts program has been amazing for my family. Two of my four children have used this program so far and have grown academically as well as socially. My son is excited to go to school every day because they have so much fun, not to mention they absolutely love their teachers and assistants. Secondly, having an income-based program for children that allows them to learn, grow, and socialize in a school setting without the stress of a payment for us as parents means the world to us. We are truly grateful for this program and what it allows for our children. The Pre-K Counts program was a game changer for our family. Preschool is very expensive and very, very important for the development of a child, so having this opportunity was much appreciated.
Personally, I can say the Pre-K Counts program has made a huge difference in my son's life. We are so pleased with his progress and that he can be around peers and adults that help that progress. He loves learning and loves going to school.
The pre-K program, and more importantly, the teachers, prepared our daughter for school in so many ways. The program offered everything academically that other preschools offer. However, the children were in the elementary school, which I think really prepared them for real school, since the classrooms were set up similarly. They had lunch and snacks and were able to go outside on the playground. They also were able to witness older students and see how school manners were to be replicated. Our daughter was more than ready for kindergarten emotionally, academically, and socially. She is thriving and loves school.
The Pre-K Counts program has been an irreplaceable resource to our family and child. Due to the support of the pre-K team, our daughter's confidence and socialization skills have grown tremendously. The curriculum is meticulously implemented, implemented, settling the foundation for learning, engaging with peers, and following directions. We are so fortunate to have been included in this program, and we, as we feel that our child is equipped for further education in kindergarten and beyond.
Having two kids go through the Pre-K Counts program, I can say well-prepared them for kindergarten, and in many times, they were ahead of the curve. It has taught them how to take responsibility for their actions, be more organized, and what is expected of them in a classroom setting. I would highly recommend this program to anyone who is hesitant to send their children to school so young.
I feel blessed to have had access to a program like Pre-K Counts for my children over the years. It provided them with the necessary skills to help them thrive and flourish in kindergarten. It also provided them with the necessary scholastic foundation. I'm forever grateful to the program and its faculty.
The Pre-K Counts program was a breath of fresh air for my child. It allowed her to engage with children her own age and learn things that I could not have done at home with her. She entered kindergarten beyond prepared, ready to learn, and ahead of the curve.
We want to express our gratitude for the tremendous impact Pre-K Counts had on our son. He started out the school year extremely shy and introverted, but his social skills flourished throughout the year. Additionally, he gained so much academically as well. He was thoroughly prepared for kindergarten due to the pre-K curriculum. We are truly grateful for the experience our son gained from Pre-K Counts, both socially and academically.
We're almost done. My son was not in Pre-K Counts for the full year, but I am so grateful for the time he was there. He thrived with such structure, and it was a wonderful introduction to his high school, to his school experience. Pre-K Counts piqued his interest in reading, and now in kindergarten, he is already reading full Dr. Seuss books on his own. We are so grateful for the program.
My daughter started kindergarten this year and is thriving. Honestly, I think she is doing so well because of the Pre-K Counts program. She absolutely adores school and is already starting to read and do simple math by herself.
As a parent who has had the privilege of enrolling two children with autism in the Pre-K Counts program for consecutive years, I cannot overstate the tremendous value this program holds for families seeking a preschool option. The dedicated and nurturing teachers provided an unparalleled level of support, enabling my children to flourish academically, socially, and emotionally. Through the Pre-K Counts program, my children not only gained essential academic skills, but also developed a strong sense of confidence in their abilities. The program fostered meaningful social connections, laying the groundwork for a smooth and successful transition into kindergarten. I wholeheartedly recommend the Pre-K Counts program to any parent seeking a nurturing and enriching preschool experience for their child. The impact it has had on my family has been immeasurable, and I am forever grateful for the invaluable foundation it provided for my children's educational journey. So we just want to take one more minute to thank you for allowing us the time to highlight our pre-K program tonight. We hope you enjoyed getting a glimpse into our day-to-day program with our pre-K kiddos. Our students are gaining a high-quality start to their cognitive, physical, and social readiness skills, and we feel very fortunate that we get to be that first stepping stone for our youngest learners in the district.
If I can just add one item about the pre-K program. It is the quality of our teachers that allows us to continue to receive that funding from the state, and this program is fully funded by the state, but that is due to the quality of the teachers that are running the program.
So we would like to greatly thank you for all the hard work that you do do, and even though in those pictures, the children are smiling and are on task. Mr. Stout and I and anyone else that frequencies pre-K, it's not always like that. There's, there's 20, you know, little bodies in there, and sometimes all 20 are doing something different. I recently had read to one of the classrooms, and yeah, the teacher conveniently was leaving for lunch when I was there, so it was an excellent experience, but no, seriously, thank you for all that you do. It is an awesome program, and yeah, we can't say enough about it. Mr. Stout, anything? Okay. Well, thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask, I know that Mr. Rothmel's out there, to talk about what's so cool about manufacturing, and you have some guests, so please come on up and introduce your, your people.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Rothmel. I'm a teacher at Boyertown Middle School West, and I am one of the co-advisors to our West Video Production Club, which participates in the What's So Cool About Manufacturing contest. Mark Magro is the other advisor who could not be here regretfully. I want to introduce to you two of our five students who are in the program this year, Addison Analaski and Emma Siler, and they are going to give you the presentation for What's So Cool About Manufacturing 2024.
Our video for What's So Cool About Manufacturing 2024 is based off of the TV series Stranger Things. We found it to be a fun and very interesting experience while editing.
Are we going to start this campaign or what?
Well, I mean, we have to wait for a wall.
Wait, what if this was from a wall? Maybe he's been kidnapped.
So where, like, the upside down?
Looks, a manufacturing plant.
We have to go save him.
Oh, so good.
Oh, wow, you're okay. We can rescue you.
I don't even understand. This is awesome.
Come on, I'll show you guys around.
What sets us apart from our competitors in the industry is other companies are using preservatives and picking ingredients in their pretzel. We have five, six, seven.
The product speaks for itself. We have so many people who love our product in the area and beyond the area.
That's why it's called unique. I've liked them ever since before I even started working here. I'll be here 20 years.
I think that it's that no one makes these kinds of pretzels, so they're unique in their sense, and then the employees are really special too, so everyone has that sort of uniqueness and are free to be themselves.
Really like to bring people in, promote from within, grow our employees as they, as they move up through the ranks here, and hopefully open up opportunities for them that they didn't even think were possible for them.
If there is advice that I could give my pass up, if you don't put in the hard work, you can't get to that spot, because at the end of the day, it takes time and it takes that effort and the willingness to want to take that effort to be able to do it, and without that, really, there's just not much that you can do.
Yeah, the place is great.
Yeah, it was the opposite of the upside down. No monsters at all.
Don't worry, guys. We just learned what to do.
And it takes that effort and the willingness to want to take that effort.
We begin tonight with breaking news.
So if you don't know anything about Stranger Things, Addison and Emma might give you a little insight on some of the little clues that are in there. We do have a slideshow, though, to kind of help you understand what the contest is, what its purpose is, and how the public can help this team potentially win an award. So, but do you mind sharing a little bit about Stranger Things and how it ties into our own unique things? Go for it.
So Stranger Things is a show on Netflix that's almost like a sci-fi kind of series. So as you saw, there's a monster at the end, and there's like a couple of like references from the show. It basically is just about a group of kids who fight monsters. It's the only way I could put it.
I don't know if there's anything I missed, really.
Nope.
No, not really.
Can you explain the lights and the letters?
Oh, yeah, do that. So in the Stranger Things series, this kid Will gets lost in this upside-down world where there are monsters and a bunch of unknown things. So the only way that he could communicate was through the lights. So we decided to make our own version of that, spelling out Unique Snacks, so then we would know that our quest would be at Unique Snacks.
What was your experience like at the factory, at Unique Factory? Since this is What's So Cool About Manufacturing, what did you, were you surprised by your tour and experience there of how pretzels are made? Anything you'd like to share?
I mean, it was definitely a really cool experience. Not only do they make pretzels, but they really like, all the employees really like what they do there, so it was definitely really fun just to see like how they go about their everyday lives making pretzels.
And I noticed that they were utilizing some type of chemical to check something. Can you share a little bit about that piece of your video?
So that type checks the moisture in the bag, so that way, when you go to buy their pretzels, it's not too soggy or too hard.
What else can you tell or share with us that goes into making a pretzel? And was that the only type of pretzel that they make that you showed in your, your video?
We only shared that type of pretzel, but Unique Snacks has a wide variety of different ones that they make. They have, they make shells, which is the outside of the pretzel, and they also make something called ruffles, which is a pretzel and like almost like a cheeto dust kind of coating.
And are Unique Snacks only unique to the Berks County area? How far do Unique Snacks go? Do they go out to California? Can you buy them in a grocery store there? Was that anything that was covered?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Are we ready to go with what's behind me now? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so up on the screen, you can see that is the 2024 Boyertown West Unique Snacks team. So you have the five of us and two of the employees from Unique Snacks.
Our whole goal of the contest is to get people to, look into, look into different manufacturing careers and see what goes on in a manufacturing job and what to expect.
So this club has been running our school for six years now. We visited many different factories, like the ones up on the screen.
Our whole timeline for this contest started all the way in the beginning of the school year, almost the beginning of the school year. We visited Unique Snacks one time in December and had Zoom meetings with them. We had a lot of deadlines throughout the year as well. Our A role, which was our draft of the video, our B role, we had to finish our plan. Our outreach plan would be how we could reach out to the community to get them to support us and also for them to support Unique Snacks. Our final submission was sending it to the people, so then they could make sure that everything's good to go for the contest. And now our final, final submission, it is now out online, and you can vote for them.
So the next two slides are posters that we made to promote and get people to vote and just see what the video is all about. So one thing the contest does do, not only does it promote about like what manufacturing's all about, but it's also very entertaining, and so it gets people to watch and kind of understand like manufacturing isn't that bad.
Our editing process took about three to four-ish months. We used WeVideo for all of our editing, and we had to figure out sound, audio tracks, import all of our videos from all of our cameras that we used, and it was a long process, but it was worth it.
So West has many different successes over the years. In 2021, we won the most creative award. In 2022, the outstanding overall program award. 2023, we had the best outreach plan, and also in 2023, we came second overall in Pennsylvania.
This is all how to vote. You guys can either scan the QR code that is up on the screen, or you can go to www.wetsocool.org, and you can vote for us as well as many other, many other videos.
So voting is from April 8th to April 10th, and so if you either scan the QR code or go to the website, you can vote as many times as you like. All you have to do is you click vote, refresh, and then vote again.
And I did share the link with all the board members tonight, so it is in your email, and if you click on the link, find Middle School West, and you will be able to vote. And like you were told, vote, refresh, vote, refresh, vote, refresh. There you go.
If I might for just a second, first of all, I want to apologize to the team here. A little miscommunication today about sharing the video with Mr. Stout. Mr. Rothmel and I are kind of going like this, but that's on me, so I apologize. But I also want to let the public know that today's newsletter contained all of the information they need to vote, vote, and re-vote. So it is out there to our entire community via the newsletter as well. So, thank you. Do you guys have any questions for the group? All right. Well, thank you for being here, and good luck. We can't wait to celebrate your success after Tuesday. Okay? Thanks.
Yes, and good luck, and we will be there with you Monday night. So, awesome. Nice job. Thank you, everyone. Next is a discussion on Policy 008, which is our Boyertown Area School District Organization chart. We have updated the organization chart to reflect the changes that were made within our Act 93 agreement, which would include our Director of Student Services in the second line, which falls and directly reports to myself, as well as the school police officers and our communications specialist. The other change that will, is noted on this is our accounting manager to the far right, which is, falls under our Chief Financial Officer, as well as our Special Education Supervisors and Assistant Principals Dean of Students, as well as the Curriculum Supervisors. The IT Systems Administrators, the Wellness and Related Fine Arts Coordinators, Instructional Coaches, Professional Staff, Athletic Ma and Psychologists, there, there are other staff members who are not professional, I'm sorry, who are not administrative staff, who do report to those departments. So those are the changes. Does anyone have any questions with respect to our organization chart? All right. Go ahead.
Next, we have reports, BCIU, Mr. Brophy.
Good BCIU meeting last month. Also, today, there was the COLA. Mrs. Torch was there at that one also. Very interesting, very informative, not all what you wanted to hear, especially around the taxing issues and the funding issues that are coming up. But in the last meeting of the BCIU, there were a few things that were out here, and I'll pass this on to Mrs. Torch, since she doesn't have them. Berks County Mental Health Community Resources, something they Berks County Mental Health Community Resources, something they talked about, something you can get on and, uh, in- individual people can get on it if there's an issue. They also have a program, Level Up Berks, Educational Pathways Overview, and to get the, to get, uh, vi- uh, individual with varying backgrounds to pursue different degrees. Uh, here's the colleges that are part of that program. I will also give that to you. I don't know if you have all this or not, but I'll, I'll get it to you anyway. Albright, Alvernia, Coates Town, Penn State, Penn State Area Community College. So it seems to be opening up more and more to, uh, getting some things in. Federal news. Something for a board that would be interesting is that, uh, public officials, uh, free speech rights and social media, something you might want to look up, when, and some of the rules around what is part of right to know in, in the social media area. There's a Public School Facilities Improvement Grant, which I'm sure Ms. Denikola is well aware of, uh, that, that's moving forward. How it's going to look when it finally gets to us, I'm not sure. I don't think she is either. There was a, the one thing we did learn today was that in coming out of Harrisburg, the one thing you can be sure of is uncertainty. There's a lot of programs, there's a lot of things to talk about, and there's nothing concrete. The Dual Credit Innovation Equity Gra- Grant Program, House Bill 1434, is out there, which also, uh, is, is looking more for the dual credits, uh, and making that more attractive. Let's see. Of course, you got the Advanced Placement Exam Cost Reduction. That's another bill, 1875, help pay for students to take those courses. Incentivizing employer contributions to employee childcare is out there, so it's something for, that would be good for the staff to look at. That's House Bill 1938. And here's an interesting one for all schools, prohibiting the use of mobile devices during the school days. Something near and dear to all our hearts, House Bill 2043. So it is, uh, it's starting to recognize how much disruption, uh, personal devices have in the classroom and starting to think that maybe some actions need to be taken toward it, or at least to tamper it down. Let's see. It's pretty much it. Vaccine consents. Long-term to work. Okay, there's no- nothing more in there. Now, here's a, uh, a, a, a book that I think Ms. Torch got today. It's a, it's a state mandate checklist. These are the mandates. This is how many mandates come down to us. They put out a book so, so you realize how many things come from the state to us constantly that we have to follow. Uh, this, this is Torch has the copies of that. I'm sure we can get some if anybody wants to see it. Yep. And I think it was something you were at, was the agricultural day? How would, could you give us a little bit on that? The Berks County Agricultural Workshop, sounds like it was a pretty neat day.
It was a great day. Uh, 18 of our, well, the 18 county schools were invited, uh, to, you know, get a, a perception of what, uh, ag looks and the job opportunities for our students to, you know, kind of gear towards. So our day started down in Birdsboro at the Brown's Feed Mill. And, um, it was very interesting in seeing that it's not just a matter of growing, um, grain or corn and just feeding it to animals. It really takes a, a, a chemical, or not a chemical, a, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? A, a formula that you have to put together to feed certain, you know, animals. So we got to, um, you know, we, we, we received instruction on some of those things and then we also went into how the bagging goes, um, what it looks like, what they have to put in, you know, the amount, you know, making sure that they're following a, a script if there's a script. So we spent quite a few, a, a, a nice amount of time there and then we headed out to Morgantown area and we were on a dairy farm. And we saw how, um, there have been changes from milking cows one day, um, a long time ago to current day where, you know, the, the, the cows, you know, go into a chute, the robot, you know, does a scan of them, uh, they check out, uh, where they, you know, were, were they there yet? And if they were there, they were booted out because you're not allowed to go through the chute more than once every however many hours. They, they, the robot can identify and then it, it scans you and, and automatically the cows are, um, being expressed of their milk, going through a whole, you know, design. It was, it was an awesome, awesome day. Learned a lot about cows that I did not know.
So how was the cleaning out stalls part?
Well, the cleaning out stalls part is also automated and there's a great big, um, shovel that just kind of goes down through the middle and the cows kind of just step over it and it, you know, pushes it to the end.
They didn't, they didn't give you a pitch for it.
Everything's automated. Yes, no. So it was, it was really a, a very good day.
Everyone said that was a pretty nice day for that. Uh, there's also a career-ready, uh, website to check out that, uh, Career, Career Berks, uh, you can look at for looking at different career, you know, videos. It's a, it's a website where there's a whole bunch of different videos, a whole bunch of different careers. You can take a look at that and, uh, see if you can find a career you would like. So I'm not, I'm not sure what all the careers are because I didn't look at it, I'll be honest. I, I'm not looking for a career at this point, so I didn't think I was one of the people that's going to look at it. But that was, that was also something to look at. Pretty much, that would be about it. They had the 11th Annual STEM Design Challenge, but I think that's, I think we're past that, so. A little bit in past. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. BCTC, Mr. Up the Grove.
Yes, I have a couple of individuals from the, uh, HOSA Conference, our, um, students. Avia Alinky, uh, for Dental Occupation, Boyertown, first place in dental science. And Julian Dietrich, Health Occupation, Boyertown, second place in Personal Care. Two students from the BCI, BCTC, Business Management and Entrepreneurship Program came in second place at the Bloomsburg University Seventh Annual Husky Dog Pound Competition at the Shark Tank Inspired Business Pitch Competition on March 21st of 2024. City attached photos. Participating students include Ian Griffin, Business Manager and Entrepreneur, uh, from Boyertown, and Brad, um, well, he wasn't from Boyertown, so we're going to leave it out. So he, he was there too, but, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Steel's presentation.
Good evening. Uh, I'm here with Mrs. Towns and Mrs. Town and Mrs. Joyce again to share with you the second part of our Steel presentation. As you recall, we were here about a month ago, um, when we were at Boyertown Middle School West, to give you a little bit of the background of where we've been over the past few years with the, the state transition, transition with the new upcoming science standards. So we just wanted to share part two with you this evening and talk a little bit about some of the different resources that we have been, um, exploring through this process. This first slide we had last time, so I'm not going to go through it in detail, but this again provides the links for you to the Steel's hub and the PDE website and some frequently asked questions that go along with the work that's being done at the state level. Um, we had shared with you last time, the, the amount of time that we have until full implementation in the 25, 26 school year. And so some of the things that we wanted to update you on, as the, the clock is still ticking, is, um, curriculum and instruction needs the alignment to our comprehensive plan because we did have some Steel's pieces in there when we presented the comprehensive plan to you back in the fall. Um, and then talk to you a little bit about where we are with resource reviews. Um, this is really the bulk of the work that we're, we're currently in the midst of at K through 12. And then, um, any additional requests that you may have for more information before we get to the point of needing to make some final decisions on resources. Uh, this is just a quick overview of what we had in the comprehensive plan when we presented it to you back in the fall. Um, as you can see, there were a number of things related to Steel's in terms of collaborating with a team to, um, develop curriculum and, um, find those curriculum resources to help support implementation as we prepare for that 25, 26 school year. And so now we think about those standards and what comes next.
I promise no quiz this evening. Uh, but as we, um, think back to the last presentation when we talked about, um, the changing in the standards and how we're shifting really to an emphasis, emphasis on student performances and students really taking ownership of what that learning looks like. We need to start thinking about, um, those instructional shifts and curriculum shifts and what that needs to look like. So one thing we wanted to point out, when we think about instructional shifts, um, if you think about traditional teaching and I, 12 years of Catholic school, very much my life was sitting near, in your desk in your little row and I'm receiving information. That's where, you know, students are recalling that information. It's a, uh, the teacher was the keeper of that information and it was kind of just shared with us. What the Steel's are asking us and what a lot of, what's happening in our classrooms today anyway, is, um, a shift more to students making sense of the science. And it's not just a teacher delivering information, but students owning part of that. Now, with the way we have that graphic up there, please keep in mind that, that teacher delivering information doesn't go away. It doesn't disappear. We just see a stronger emphasis on students making more meaning and carrying the bigger lift there, if you will, and owning that understanding more. If we think as a district of where we currently are, just across the board with all of our instruction, we're probably somewhere right in the middle here where we see a, a mix of that, um, teacher delivering of information, which again, is, is not a bad thing. But we do need to see a shift towards students shouldering more of that and making sense of what's happening. And if you think about, you know, just yesterday, um, science happens all around us and it's happening every day. So part of what we have to consider is, you know, um, how we're, what we're looking for when we consider our curriculum, whether it's, uh, a full curriculum, um, a prepackaged resource, just materials that support. Some of the things we want to make sure of are, um, is there an emphasis in the students making sense and, and really experiencing the science? Do we see the collaboration? Do we see that it's, um, a, a phenomenon-based, uh, ex- uh, experience, just like we had yesterday, actually? Is there intentional 3D design? There's a lot of programs out there that we've looked at where they, they, uh, claim to be NGSS aligned and you see a surface level connection to, um, the cross-cutting concepts and the disciplinary core ideas and those science and engineering practices, but it tends to live at that surface level. We want to make sure that our students are truly able to apply those things and not just have that surface level, um, mention in whatever resource we're looking at. We also want that accessibility for all. And again, as I said, yesterday's a great example of science happening around us every day. We want all of our students to be able to have an understanding of what's happening in the world around them, to be curious about what's happening in the world around them. So part of that comes from also making sure that whatever we're looking at has some of the differentiated instructional pieces we might need for our range of learners, um, and also some student supports that would be helpful in, um, making sure all of our students are able to access that information. So any packaged curriculum or resource you may look at, um, that puzzle piece up there where it has curriculum and resources won't exactly fit. If, if everyone across the state right now is looking for a perfect fit, and unfortunately rarely do we find something that meets the needs of our students, addresses the standards and in this case, the Steel standards, um, but also, uh, aligns with our district goals. Rarely do we find that. So as we're all working to find something, we also have to consider, well, the resources we might find, how would we use it? And there's a range of ways we could use a resource, everything from just a reference where it's a foundation for, um, a scope and sequence. We might mimic how things are introduced or rolled out. It can continue all the way up to, we are using some of this, um, anchoring phenomenon or some of the hands-on activities. So, you know, stronger pieces from whatever resource or materials that we found. Again, it could get more and more intense as we look at, maybe we take a whole unit for something, um, up to full use where, uh, with, when it comes to Steel's, we're using the entire sto- storyline and the suggestions in the teacher edition, the professional learning accompanied with that. So we have a whole range of potential for any resource and how it might be used, and those are all things we consider as we're looking at those. Creating our own curriculum from scratch is an option. We put some of the, uh, put, you know, steps that we would need to take in order for that to happen. And here you can kind of see, it'd be very labor-intensive. It's not that it's impossible, and on the next slide, we do go into some detail about different levels, but part of it becomes, um, not just our office having, um, a, a really deep understanding of what these new standards are and the shifts, but making sure all of the teachers that will be working on developing that curriculum have that same understanding. Hours and hours and hours to develop 180 days' worth of units, lessons, assessments. Uh, I can tell you right now, creating an assessment, it sounds easy, it's really hard. It's really challenging, especially if you want it to be meaningful, um, and relevant and, and show what students could do. It, it's not the easiest thing in the world. There's a reason people get paid lots of money to do that. So it's a challenge. And when we're looking at our resources and creating them, th- there are some issues that would make it a challenge for us to, to do that. But again, it's a option that we could consider, um, in creating a homegrown piece. When we look across the board, elementary to our high school level, um, we just see some roadblocks, especially at elementary. You know, all of my teachers are teaching multiple content areas in a given day. We do have some grade levels where they departmentalize and they're a little more focused on science, but they're most likely also teaching science and social studies. So it's never just one subject area that we're focused on. As we heard earlier, there's a lot of state mandates. We have that same booklet hanging in our office and we are after it frequently to make sure we're staying on top of those. But structured literacy is a big piece right now that is having a heavy impact on elementary. So considering doing something like a homegrown, um, uh, self-developed curriculum for science really would have a heavy impact on our elementary staff. Again, not impossible, but the potential for doing that, we'd have to make some considerations to what that looked like. Middle school, again, they are impacted by some of those, um, mandates that we see from the state. Some of that, um, structured literacy might not hit as heavily, but there are other ones that come into play. Again, with resources and personnel, we do have, um, department chairs or leads that can support some of that work. They receive a stipend for, um, you, supporting our office and communicating with staff. But again, we're talking about an investment of time and, um, uh, over at least the, the summer and school year for sure, to make sure we have that 180 days' worth of lessons and units ready to go. Bash, it might be a possibility. Again, at that level, we're a little more content-specific, where you're focused on a content area, but please keep in mind that they are also teaching multiple courses. So I might not just be teaching one, um, biology class. I might have an honors biology class on top of that, or I'm teaching a physics class if I'm doubly, uh, duly certified in those things. So again, there's potential for constructing our own units. We just don't see that as a high likelihood of starting from scratch. Before I turn to that next slide, I did want to point out, one of the things we do recommend is looking for something that we can adapt and edit so that it does meet our needs and address some of our specific desires here in the district.
All right. So talking about, um, what are some of the possible resources that we are looking at for Steel's implementation, just to really help this process of, of implementing the shifts in instruction and curriculum? Uh, when we implement new materials, uh, the OTL really, uh, does our very best to follow the steps that you see outlined on the board. So the first step in any, um, adoption of a new material is the resource review by the Office of Teaching and Learning. I'm really taking a look at different resources. Oftentimes, resources are recommended by BCIU or PDE, teacher recommendations of what they are seeing. So we, we have recommendations from many areas and we, we look at all of these resources and start doing an initial review. And that review is based on, for this specific for Steel's, um, on what we saw that Mrs. Joyce referenced, um, regarding the NGS alignment and making sure that whatever resource we're looking at really meets the expectations of NGSS. Uh, so that's an initial step. And then, once the OTL reviews, um, it, we move it to the teaching staff. And this teaching staff can also review the resources and provide feedback. Um, at that point, they're looking at the resources, they're analyzing the resources, they are not implementing them with students in any way. Followed by that, we, uh, would like to do limited pilots where maybe a couple teachers are piloting, um, whatever the resources or multiple resources, or, um, they're taking a limited amount from a resource. So that's what makes that limited. Either it's a smaller number of teachers or it's a shorter p- time period where we're only implementing a very small piece of the resource. Then we move into an ex- an extended pilot. The extended pilot is where, um, they would be taking maybe an entire unit or two units. The extended pilot is where they would be taking maybe an entire unit or two units, all teachers or more teachers are making the implementation with students and they're experiencing the resource. And then, that's followed by adoption. So, this is our typical phase that, or steps that we follow when we move through, when we bring new materials to you for adoption. Where we are currently at elementary, middle school, and high school with resource and adoption is at the initial review. So, we had hoped to be further along, but at this point, we are here and we are hopefully going to have a limited pilot this spring a little bit, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. We are not going to be able to do an extended pilot at this time because of the pause that we had and budget constraints that Mrs. Landis is going to be talking about when she comes back up. So, we're here at the resource review and what are our steps for the rest of the school year and into next year? We want to have this teacher involvement in looking at these resources. So, at the elementary level, we have a few resources they're going to be looking at, middle school also as well as high school. When they are looking at these resources, they're also going to be considering all of the alignment pieces that we're looking for with NGSS. Is it intentional with sense-making and the 3D learning and really bringing those pieces in and looking at the resource based on those parameters? This year, we will also continue with our professional learning. We've been doing this, we will continue to do this so that our students, our teachers are understanding the shifts and looking at the performance expectations, looking at possible future units. This summer, we need to make a resource purchase. We should, we need to start developing curriculum documents. And then, next year, we will begin to instruct science classes with new routines and maybe a limited implementation of the adopted resources. We will not do that for biology because of the biology keystone. So, the shift in assessment doesn't happen until '25, '26, and so, we will not do any implementation in biology as far as the new curriculum with the STEEL standards. So, then by '25, '26, not far away at all, we will, the mandate, the state mandate is that we must implement the new STEEL standards fully. So, a couple of the resources, if you take a look at the chart up on the board, we did this for all of the resources, OTL looked at each resource, and this is OTL's initial review. And the areas that you see on the board are based on that NGSS alignment, and you can see each area. I will not go through and read each of these to you, but I do encourage you to look at these, look at the learning links that are attached to each of these. So, we looked at each of the areas that are listed, but it's not a comprehensive list. Those were the major things that we looked at for each resource, but we also considered scientific accuracy, we considered content, we considered if it was preparing our students for college or science careers, we looked at if there was any potential for bias. So, those are just other areas we considered, and I just want to make sure that you understand that doesn't mean, just because we're saying that we're considering that, it doesn't mean that that resource had any of those pieces, there wasn't an issue with those. Those are just other pieces that we looked at. So, elementary, you can see one of the resources we're looking at is Activate Prime. This is through Activate Learning. Activate Learning would also partner with us for OpenSciEd, which is something we're looking at for middle school and high school. Elementary, we're also looking at FOS. This is something that has been used in our elementary and so, a piece that we're, again, considering as we move to NGSS. And then, a third one we're looking at is Amplify, and you can just see, again, you know, where it fits as far as NGSS alignment. At the middle school level, we are looking at two resources, OpenSciEd partnering with Activate Learning for professional learning and the hands-on materials, and also looking at Amplify as well. At the high school level, we are considering OpenSciEd, again, partnered with Activate Learning, or we're looking at Savas. They have Experience Chemistry and Physics. Those are two of their programs that they have. They also have a biology, but it's not part of the Experience series or the Experience program. So, biology is not available in that Experience program until after implementation is required. So, that's something that we need to consider and as we look at these resources.
One of the other things we've been exploring as we are continuing to work through making some of these decisions is being in communication with some of our other local districts as well as the intermediate unit to continue conversations about, you know, what are others considering, what resources are people looking at, kind of sharing the learning that each of us are having with each other to try to make the best use of our resources. So, we've asked other Berks County schools to share their status with us. Through the Berks County Curriculum Coordinators, we're often able to put together some questions that we can ask the other districts in the county to see where people are at. We've gotten responses back from 10 other districts at this point in time, and I will say, no two school districts are looking at the exact same set of resources. So, that's been part of the challenge. There are a lot of different resources out there and they're all at different stages of completion in terms of the pieces that are NGSS-aligned and that have been fully developed. So, that makes this task a little bit more challenging and we want to make sure that we are really looking at the pieces that are going to best support our teachers and our students. So, really trying to be, you know, rigorous with the work that we're doing. We've also been in communication with a couple of the other districts in our area, ONJ and Springfield specifically, and having some conversations with them around where they're at in the process. And again, there's a lot of variation out there and a lot of districts still kind of right around where we are in terms of trying to determine what's going to be the best tools to use to support our students and staff moving forward. We have a couple Professional Learning Days yet this school year. Mrs. Town has been meeting with some of our high school science teachers since the last time we had presented to you to have some of them get a closer look at some of the resources that we're considering, and we intend to do more of that with all of our science teachers in our upcoming Professional Learning Days and really getting some helpful input from them, you know, looking at the pros and cons of some of these different resources. And as Mrs. Joyce said, you know, there might not be a perfect fit out there, but what can we look at that is going to best align with our district goals, the state standard requirements, and the resources that are available to us so that we can make our best-informed decisions? What we're looking at is between now and June, again, having our teachers continue to dig into these resources with us as we continue that resource review, hopefully getting some limited hands-on experience for our teachers with some pilot resources. But then, by June, really coming to you with some further recommendations as to what resources we would like to move forward with and get some things purchased to get in the hands of our teachers so that we can continue the work that needs to move forward in order to be fully prepared for the '25, '26 school year. We're looking at approximately a $500,000 initial expense for the resources that we would need to get into teachers' hands in order to be able to begin this work. And then, there would be ongoing expenses for kit replenishment because, again, there's very much a hands-on component to this and that phenomena-based experience. And so, there's a lot of replenishment of materials that's needed over the course of time. So, there are ongoing expenses with that. We can use some ESAR funding as we look at the need to, you know, improve our science scores and so on. We can use some ESAR funding for some science materials, but again, that will be ending this September and then we'll have to go to our OTL budget for further expenses after that time. Any questions for us at this point? Mr. Zawada?
Are there any school districts that are close to what we're looking at or is everybody so far apart?
There's a lot of variation. The ones that we have up there, there are some other districts in the area that are looking at some of those same ones that we are. There's a couple other names out there that some other districts have been looking at as well. But again, I really haven't found any two that are in the exact same spot. And, you know, some that we've asked, they've decided, you know, what they're doing with elementary, but they haven't decided secondary yet or vice versa. The challenge is, as you saw with the different company names that we had mentioned up there, it's difficult to find any. I really don't know that there are any that, you know, K to 12 have these units fully developed across the board for the whole continuum. And so, it's looking at what different pieces are going to be the best fit at elementary, middle, and high school, but also then give us that continuity from one level to the next. Because as we've been working on horizontal alignment with our teachers this year, we're moving to that vertical alignment piece over the next few years where we want to make sure that as students transition from one grade level to the next and one building level to the next, that we have that appropriate transition for them and that building upon of skills and knowledge that they need.
Yeah, the reason I said that, because maybe, and I'm not sure if they do it, but we do consortiums on other subjects, that if we get something that everybody is sort of agreed to-
Right, yes, yes.
-it can go as a group and see what kind of pricing-
Exactly, yes, yep. And we've been, again, communicating with the BCIU regarding those pieces. We have monthly curriculum coordinators meetings and we have those types of conversations. And I don't think they're to that point yet of putting together a consortium because, again, not everyone's decided what they're going to be using yet at this point, but that's definitely something that we always look into. Yes?
Well, one question is, how much is left in our ESAR funds? Do we know that offhand?
There's roughly about $2.2 million. A lot of that has already been carved out though and budgeted for future expenditures. We do have a plan to fully expend it.
But there's money for this.
Mrs. Landis has money for this for the initial-
I have money set aside in that money that we have left to spend with ESAR for this.
Thank you for that. My next question would be, should we be working with the IU to kind of help coordinate this a little bit so it's not as much pressure on our staff that we're all getting all the-
And we have been. We have gone, we've gone and we've also sent some teachers to the BCIU. They've had several different trainings on STEELS over the past couple of years, actually, that we've been participating in. Mrs. Town and I are actually going to one this Thursday at the BCIU, so we are definitely continuing to utilize those trainings and those resource planning sessions that they have available. Mrs. Kreutz?
Thank you. So, is the content changing or just the way that it needs to be taught?
A little bit of both. The big focus is on the way that it's taught. I'll let Mrs. Town speak to that a little bit because she's been really working closely with the high school in particular.
So, the major shift is really, is the instruction, right? And really making students have the sense-making, the experiences, and students directing their learning. But there is also content shift as well. One of the areas that they wanted to focus on is making sure that we were reaching depth and not breadth. So, that was another part of this framework that shaped these standards and then shaped NGSS, which obviously influenced our STEELS. And so, there is a focus on depth of knowledge rather than breadth of information. So, there is a content change. Another area is the way students gain vocabulary knowledge. You know, rather than that being front-loaded and students are learning that vocabulary at the beginning, they're using their experiences to be able to kind of gain the understanding of the concept and build their understanding rather than just, you know, having that front-loaded and that memorization, but really understanding the word, the vocabulary, the concept through their experiences. So, the curriculum isn't changing entirely, but there is definitely a shift in the focus.
So, I guess what I was wondering is, like, do we have or have we used science kits in the past that could be utilized going forward? Like, do we have to start, like, all over from scratch or?
At the elementary level, there, we have used kits in the past. At the middle school and high school level, we do have actually a lot of lab materials already. So, whatever resource that we choose, we would first do an inventory. So, we would really inventory, what do we have? Like, I'm pretty sure we don't need, now, science teachers can tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we need any more microscopes right now. I think we have a lot of those. So, I think there are some pieces that, you know, we'll look at our inventory and then that will help us determine what we might not need as far as some of our kits. So, there are pieces to be able to work with.
One of the considerations listed was potential for bias. Can you explain, like, what you look for with that?
We just want to take a look at the different resources and the way that the information is being presented in, whether it's a textbook or a website or whatever, to really just make sure that it is focused on the standards and that we're really, you know, focused on the science and that that is the priority of the resource that we're taking a look Mrs. Scott?
So, I looked through the standards and that's all, you know, not all of them, okay, but I went, I did go through just to check it out.
It's a lot.
I guess I will just mention the one thing. That's a concern for me, but I'm not throwing the baby out with the bath water when I bring it forward, but I bring it forward, you know, because I've been, you know, asked to do so. In part of the commitment that OpenSciEd has, they have a section about us, okay? And I'm thinking this is staff development, which would kind of fall under the CRSC, which we kind of nixed in the comprehensive planning, so I would expect it wouldn't be part of professional development, but I just want you to concur on that. The line is, "The equitable instructional practices are central to the design of OpenSciEd, instructional materials, and professional learning." So, we're talking about what the teachers are going to be using. "Our development process seeks to surface and address inequities in the engagement and participation of Black and Brown students in science learning, including those impacted by various forms of systemic discrimination in addition to racism and all that." So, that's at CE, CRSC, that's kind of part of that, that we kind of pulled out of our comprehensive plan. STEELS is in there as part of the standards that we have to meet, but this is something that as a board, I believe, and you correct me if I'm wrong, we kind of pulled that out of there, so will that be staying out of the professional development?
Well, and I think that's where that puzzle piece graphic was shared with you, where, you know, we want to make sure that we're aligning with our, with the science standards as well as aligning with our district goals. We certainly want to make sure that all of our students, regardless of their background, have access to-
Sure.
...learning science and being able to be successful students in our district, and that's really what our focus is going to be on.
Yeah, and I expect that teachers do that. Like, I don't expect teachers are concerned about this, yeah.
And, you know, that's too, where as we're looking at these resources, you know, is the resource something that is adaptable, editable? Or, as we think about that one slide where we looked at the continuum of how resources are used, are we going to use it fully as-is or is this a resource that we're looking at using as, you know, more of a reference and where we're going to pull in certain things? Or are we using it as a whole? Or is it something that's editable? And if there's a unit that does not meet our needs, might we create one of our own to replace it?
Okay. Will the board at all be able, since it's a lot of money, even though it is grant money, will we be able to see some of the instructional materials that they're going to use or is that, I mean, do you have some on hand at some point when you get all, figure out what you're bringing forward as your choices? Would we be able to look at that?
Right, yep. And depending on which resources we decide to go with after we, you know, continue working through this process with our, with the teachers and our staff, some of them are more textbook-type resources-
Right, and that's good.
...and others have more online resources. That was one of the things that we looked at as we looked at them as well.
Okay.
But certainly, those resources will be available.
Made available, okay. And just so you know, and I think Mr. Stout knows, I've always been for purchasing curriculum as opposed to building it because I think the teachers have a base and they can create now. They have more time in their classroom when they have something like this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Nyman?
So, we're going to be going back to some textbooks again?
That is one, some of the resource companies have more textbook-based. We haven't made it as final decision yet which ones we're going to be utilizing.
And how many of those texts, are we going to be buying one for each student that would be in that course?
We typically look at class sets when we're looking to make textbook purchases, but again, we're not to that stage yet, so we haven't finalized that piece.
I'm just concerned because the textbooks over the previous years have only a short span of life and then we've got to buy new, so-
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
All of those pieces are part of the consideration. Any other questions? Mrs. Kreutz?
Sorry. I guess, I have-
Sorry, I guess, I, I have some concerns with OpenSciEd in that, like, it seems to be very committed to identity politics. And I love science, I love this whole idea of kids discovering on their own, that's how I taught, that's how I was taught to teach, and I feel like it's just a distraction. Like, I mean, this one paragraph from their materials talks about, this is one sentence. It talks about promoting the rightful presence for all students across multifaceted scales of justice. And here's what they include: race, socio-economic class, gender, educational sovereignty, indigenous rights, immigration history, land and water rights, sexual orientation, gender expression, abilities, and other dimensions of social difference related to justice. It just seems like a distraction. Like, I just want our kids to learn science.
And we're looking at all of those different pieces as we try to make the best decision for our district as to what we're going to be using, so. We're looking at all of the pieces of the different resources that we have available to us and encouraging our teachers to look at all of those pieces as well.
So if there are some that you know may not be comfortable by the board or parents, would you kind of leave those out or change it around, or what would you, what, what are we going to do?
So that's all part of this process.
Okay.
Yep, looking, yep, looking at the materials, looking at, you know, that list of, of potential concerns that we mentioned for all of them, those potential considerations. We're looking at all of those pieces to determine, is this going to be the right fit for, for the resource for us to use or not? And if we think it is, in what capacity would we be looking to use it? Is it something that we would be looking to use as a whole, or would we be looking to use certain pieces and other pieces that are not the best fit for, for our purposes? Mr. Zawada?
Maybe during the discussions with the other school districts, you could see what, what they're leaning towards too on, on this particular company.
Yep, absolutely.
Maybe there's other feelings as well. Thanks.
Yes, absolutely. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
This time would be public comment period number one. No one has signed up, so I'll be looking for the approval minutes for March 12, 2024, committee of the whole.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Underneath the superintendent's consent agenda, we have a settlement agreement for student number 102715, looking for the Board of School Directors to approve this confidential settlement and release agreement for student number 102715.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under the superintendent's itemized agenda, we have an overnight trip, and we are looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the following overnight trip as listed.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve policy 008 for first reading and move it forward to the April 23, 2024 Board of School Directors meeting for second reading and approval.
I'll second.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the capital projects for the 2024-2025 school year.
Panerello seconds.
Ms. Duroff?
It's somewhat different than the one we got back on March 12th, but a lot of these things are things that we're going to have to get outside vendors for. I would like to see what we're going to be doing in-house, because there's not, I mean, most of it is, well, you have the list, you know, tractor replacement camera, we're not going to be doing that stuff, so what are we doing with our employees is what I'd like to see.
We can have Mr. Schill respond to that. He's not here this evening, but we can have him respond to the board on that.
Okay, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I'm concerned, because we don't have the price there for the HVAC system over Boyertown Elementary. And that's a definite, we definitely have to get that on.
I do know Mr. Schill was still working on the quotes for that, trying to obtain them from a number of vendors.
I, I know that, but this is going to kind of be open-ended, because it's going to be more than the $3 million that's on here.
When the quotes for the Boyertown L system are received, we'll bring those back to the board for approval.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's not being put by the wayside, because it's something that definitely needs to be done this year. We can't, we can't wait, we can't have those children in a school that's not being heated or air-conditioned properly, so, okay, thank you.
Just to follow up, I want to comment that Mr. Schill did make with respects to HVAC and chillers, that there is almost, what, a year?
A 52-week lead time currently. I know Mr. Schill's looking for other vendors as well, but the lead time is pretty significant, so that's what we're up against as well.
Well, I also know we were looking at going from electric to something else, so it, it's going to take significant time, but I don't want to put it on hold. I want to make sure we're doing it. Thank you.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the Public School Facility Improvement Grant Resolution as presented.
Panerello moves.
Zawada seconds.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the Berks Career and Technology Center 2024-2025 proposed budget as presented.
Zawada moves.
I'll second.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And lastly, we are looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda items as presented.
Panerello seconds.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
No.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panerello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just one quick question on this. We continue to have a bunch of resignations, we're doing exit interviews, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and are we seeing any, any threads in the exit interviews that would lead us to something that we should address?
No, with the individuals specifically on this board agenda, all of them had significant reasons for their departure, whether it was receiving a degree and they're moving on for a position that's now full-time, or individuals who their, just their, their economic situation required higher pay or more hours.
Thank you.
There's no one signed up for public comment period number two, so we're going to go into board comment. Mr. Updegrove, Roger.
No comment.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes, I want to thank Mrs. Torscha and the Washington Elementary Principal Staff, everybody that was involved in the Life Skills event that I attended. It's saddening that I was the only board member to attend. Very saddening. The Life Schools, Life Skills Group was excellent. I mean, everybody was so in tune to those students that are in there, and I believe, if I'm correct, there was 19 of them. Amazing young children, and it's a shame more people didn't come out too. Meet with them, eat with them, I did not eat, I was so in tuned at going around to each and every one of them. It was, their, their faces are just heartbreaking, so thank you for allowing that, and just sad that nobody else attended.
I don't know, like, I just wanted to make the board aware that there isn't a baccalaureate service being planned for this year. I mean, I know we're not responsible for it, but I just wanted to bring some awareness to it. I reached out to Mr. Cherkowski, because he's our resident historian, and he said that the baccalaureate service has been a tradition since the first Boyertown graduating class of 1893, and that the first baccalaureate was held on the evening of Thursday, May 18th, 1893, and was conducted by Reverend Boyer. Both the commencement, which was held on the 27th, and the baccalaureate service were held in the Rhodes Opera House, the very opera house that would burn down in 1908, claiming over 170 lives, so leave it to him to give the historic context. But the only, I mean, I know there's multiple reasons why at this time it's not being planned, but one of them, one of the reasons that I heard was the rising cost that it required them to rent, I guess, the auditorium for it, so I wasn't, yeah. Sorry. Well, they have a bill.
That certainly was not brought to my attention, and had that been asked of me, there wouldn't, I, I don't know what the past practice has ever been, but that would not be a reason not to have a baccalaureate.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, which is why I wanted to bring it up. I don't think it's the only reason, it was one that was, people just started asking me, because we're getting close, you know, as we approach May, people think if you're on the board, you know everything, which maybe the rest of you do, but I don't, so...
You're bringing news to myself, so this was not brought to my attention in any way, so I'm happy to do some research and find out who in the past has held it and what they do believe are their challenges, so...
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I just want to ask a question of Mr. Hahn. It just came across my emails, a parent wants to know how the hiring is going for the commander of the ROTC.
It's a good question, and Mrs. Torscha and I had a conversation yesterday. We are asking Mr. Hayman to assist us with that process if we're going to continue with the Navy. He had a deadline of tomorrow to have a conversation with us. If not, then we're going to move on in a, in a different direction, potentially a different direction.
I did, when I did some research, it does not have to be Navy, just to give you a heads up.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Duroff?
Want to go back to what Mrs. Kratz said, we're not having a baccalaureate service?
This is the first I'm hearing of it, Mrs. Duroff, and I will look into it. I don't know what the challenges are. If it is only due to the, the auditorium, we can certainly address that.
I don't care what the challenges are at this point.
I, I, I've never been involved, our high school administration, to my knowledge of it.
I would be a challenge.
I, I...
We're spending all this money to have a consultant teach our principals, is this what they're teaching them?
This is not something that is coming from our administration, Mrs. Duroff. We don't manage, we do not manage the baccalaureate.
Who does that?
That is an outside, I'm, I'm looking to Mr. South, but I know that he doesn't know, we've just not been involved. I understand that it's somebody from outside.
Yeah, so I believe it's an organization of pastors, youth pastors and senior pastors from this area that have shared responsibility for it in the past. Sometimes, like, if a pastor had a graduating senior, they would take the lead on it. Dave Jones was also pretty instrumental in getting things organized at the high school level, but he recently resigned and moved to Tennessee, so that's part of it.
I always thought we did, the school did.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I'm just finding this out as well, because I was trying to answer questions that I was given.
Is it that difficult that we couldn't do it ourselves if there's a problem that whoever, whatever organization...
Go ahead, Mr. Sultanic, thank you.
Actually, I do have some recollection of this. Because of the need to separate church and state from a constitutional perspective, and there is history relating to this, we have historically relegated the control of the baccalaureate service to the local ministry that makes that determination, so we're not involved in that directly. So there is a long history that dates back to the utilization of the baccalaureate service. But we can't run it, we can provide perhaps space for it, but we can't be the operative entity.
We do have relations with the different ministeriums. I have no problem reaching out to see if there is any interest and how I can assist them through, through our facility.
Mr. Brophy?
I have a quick question for Mr. Sultanic. Reading many emails that are coming across my screen, it appears that we have some board members that are meeting with outside groups on educational matters without informing the rest of the board, not at the direction of the administration, and not through any public meeting or public announcement of it. In doing that, are we pushing toward any legal issues, having some issues, and doing, doing some practices like that?
Oh, I ordinarily, ordinarily do not issue public legal opinions, because I owe an attorney-client privilege with the entire board. So to the extent that ultimately there would be a legal opinion issued, that would have to be done privately in an executive session or through correspondence. However, there is nothing that is in the school code or the sunshine law that dictates how an individual board member is going to individually communicate to the general public. I generally advise board members who communicate publicly to say that they are speaking on their own behalf and not speaking officially on behalf of the school board, but individual board members are not legally precluded from individually meeting with groups. As to whether or not that's something you think is appropriate organizationally as a board, and having individuals talk to community groups that, in a way that you may not agree with, I would suggest that you raise that issue publicly with those individuals and address it in that fashion, but there's nothing illegal about individual board members... But there's nothing illegal about individual board members speaking to community groups.
Not, this isn't individual board meetings, this is a group of board members. That's what's given me my concern.
If the group is less than a quorum of the board, so less than five individuals, that is not prohibited under the sunshine law or the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. If that isn't a way you want to operate as a school board, then I think you need to address that via board policy and discussion at this level. And it is my understanding that the board will be eventually reviewing its policies, governing committee use and how boards, the board interacts with each other and makes decisions, and that could be something that is addressed as part of that discussion.
Ms. Duroff?
Could I recommend that we go into executive session, please?
After this meeting, you mean?
Right now.
No.
He can't give a legal opinion unless we're in executive session.
Well, we'll have the executive session then after this meeting.
I don't believe this is executive session material because it involves the sunshine law. And if the sunshine law is involved, it needs to be dealt with right in public.
Not, not true. I can issue a, an opinion on the Sunshine Act privately to the school board as a legal opinion.
Ms. Updegrove?
I have nothing. Nothing, it's time.
I also have nothing to add.
Upcoming meetings, we have April 23rd, Board of School Directors Meeting at 7 o'clock PM at the Education Center. May 14th, the Committee of the Whole Meeting, 7 PM at Boyertown Education Center. This will be the proposal of final 2024-2025 budget approval. And May 28th, Board of School Directors Meeting, 7 o'clock PM at Boyertown Area School District Education Center.
Motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.